Important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at goodyearaz.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call and order the meeting. The time is 6:14, February 25, 2019. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all thy blessings and new opportunities you have bestowed upon our city and our neighboring cities. We thank you for the council's leadership as responsible and trustworthy stewards. We ask that you reveal to us new wisdom and ideas which unite us as one, causing all to prosper as a community, which demonstrates respect and value for all our lives. For your word fills our hearts and our minds with intentional, sound financial decisions for our city as our home and industries grow. Lord, we ask for a special prayer for our committed staff, our shared vision, as they continue to serve our city in lockstep with council. Lord, we ask for your blanket of protection for our police and fire and for the men and women of our armed forces serving throughout the world. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we're here, all of us this evening. I just want to shout out Councilman Stip, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you for joining us via the telephone. All right, so let's go down to the communications. We have one item this evening. Staff will present a recap of the Wildflower North Playground build held on February 16, 2019. David Side, Parks and Recreation Manager, presenting. David?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to provide an update on a fantastic turnout for our most recent playground build. It was just a couple of weeks ago that, in between the rain that we've been having, we had a tremendous turnout from a number of individuals, and a bunch of them are here with us here tonight. So when I do call out your group, definitely put your arm up and be recognized. We're very excited and proud that everybody was able to join us on that day for the build and tonight for a little recognition as well. So first of all, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Campbell and Councilmember Hampton for being out there that day. Really appreciate you being out there and being supportive of our efforts, and we definitely appreciate you being out there and spending some time that afternoon with us. In addition to that, I had a couple Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission members. I know one was attempting to join us tonight. He may join us a little bit late, but we did have some of our commissioners out there. In addition to that, two of our partners, the Reds and the Indians, they were able to peel a few of the players away. Obviously, they're knee-deep into spring training right now, so they couldn't join us tonight, but they were definitely out there, working hand-in-hand with all of the volunteers out there. A big hit and impact. The kids love seeing them out there. And it wasn't just a photo op. They were literally out there working. They were moving five bar, they were attaching attachments, and they were definitely out there working just like anybody else. So we appreciate their support. Next, we have Desert Edge. We have the National Honor Society students, so if I can have you raise your arms. We had members from our adopted park sponsor, Odyssey Preparatory Academy. And we also had Mr. Andrew Kerfoot, this young gentleman, as part of his Eagle Scout Award project. Went ahead and took on this and partnered with us and did a lot of the preparation and coordination with us. And his older brother actually did it a year and a half, two years ago, and would love to see Andrew back and helping out and doing that as well. We also had several members of the Fire Cadets. We had Battalion 181 from Fire out there helping us as well. And if they say a picture's worth a thousand words, I'm going to go ahead and get to our next slide here.
Oh, it's fine.
And that kind of shows you, we had well over 100 individuals in attendance, and it was a great day, beautiful weather, and it really was very satisfying seeing all of those members of the community come together and put the final pieces together of that park. So before I do leave, I do want to introduce Mr. John Hammond. He was an individual that I met there. When I said if he had brought his grandson to the playground build, he said, "No, my grandson brought me."
That's right, yeah.
So it's always nice to meet people and to see them out there and see the generations embrace these opportunities. So... With that, I conclude my presentation, and we had a very outstanding Wildflower North Community Playground built.
So could we get a picture?
Can we get some comments here quickly, the people that were there? Unfortunately, I had another engagement and I couldn't go, so, yes, Brandon?
Yeah, it was great. I mean, when I showed up, I was like, I don't know, 30 minutes later or so, but it was great to see like 85-plus people out there and a lot of people working, a lot of great community involvement, people who are going to be using the park, and then the whole community, different facets, the students and different groups, and the Boy Scouts and the Odyssey. It was really good. I brought my son out too, so we were helping do it as well, and that was just a great opportunity. And it just revitalizes and helps the area and sense of pride in the community. So thank you to everybody that supported and volunteered and gave up your time those days. It went really well, and more hands definitely helped make it go quicker, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, and yes, a picture would be nice.
Okay, great.
So how do you want to arrange that? So you want us down there? Thank you, all right. Troop down there. All right, now we're at the time when citizens would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda items. Before you read the cards, because I know you have them, I just want to kind of give the directions, it makes it a little bit easier for them. So the council will listen to your comments, may take one of the following. Respond to criticism. Request that staff investigate and report on the matter. Request that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Yellow light will let you know we have 20 seconds left to speak. And when you speak, identify yourself clearly. We only need your name for the record. So would you call out the cards, please? Hemi Grogre and Skip Strasser are in the same... Welcome.
Hello, my name's Skip Strasser, and I'm speaking on behalf of my in-laws. And the question is, we're trying to figure out what the process is to get Dala Ride up into Australia Mountain Ranch. Currently, it's only available down at Walmart, so it's an eight- or nine-mile drive to get him down there to get the Dala Ride. So she's been on the phone the last couple of days, and she's visually impaired, so it's a little difficult. And they told her we had to come talk to this meeting here to address it and try to find out what the process actually is to get that up to Australia Mountain Ranch.
Well, certainly, I can understand that question. And so I'm directing staff at this moment to please find the information out. And you have, do you have their telephone number and the things you need to respond? Or an email?
Actually, I have their address, but I...
Okay.
I'll get it.
All right, and we greatly appreciate you coming forth with that question.
She just wanted to say there's five or six other people up there that are all trying to get the same thing.
Well, we appreciate that information. We'll add that to our research, okay?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's the last card for this item.
Is that it?
Yeah, everything else is an agenda item.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Well, let's go to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.6 by title only, please?
6.1, approval of minutes. 6.2, approve fiscal year 2019 budget transfers. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2019-1936, authorizing the First Amendment of the Cable Television License Agreement between the City of Goodyear and Quest Broadband Services, Inc., DBA CenturyLink. 6.4, approve the Southwest Family Advocacy Center Intergovernmental Agreement. 6.5, approve the recommended appointments to city boards, commissions, and committees. And 6.6, adopt resolution number 2019-1939, vacating, abandoning certain streets, and relinquishing all interest in certain public utility easements previously dedicated to the city in the plat for Airport Commerce Centers Subdivision Number Four, providing for an effective date of the abandonment and imposing requirements and conditions for the abandonment to become effective and imposing a deadline for completion of the abandonment. That completes it.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the council wish to room on item from the consent agenda?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Stip.
I've got a question slash comment on 6.3.
Could I bring staff forward just to answer those?
Please.
All right, so 6.3, who's going to address that? Oh, she's on her way.
And is there a representative from Quest or CenturyLink there?
Yes, we do have, Councilmember Stip, this is Linda Beals, real estate coordinator, and yes, we do have her representative here this evening.
Okay, thanks, Linda. My question, just generically before I make my comment, is this is a temporary extension to keep us in line with the new state law until the new agreement is finalized, is that correct?
That's correct. We have a timeframe on when that has to be completed. We have to have it available between July 1, 2019, and January 2, and they have until June 30, 2020, to cancel.
Thank you. So this is my opportunity as a CenturyLink customer to express my absolute displeasure with the quality of service that they are providing to portions of the City of Goodyear. The area that I live in, we have no choice but to use Quest slash CenturyLink, and my internet is horrible. I'm paying for one gig, and I'm not even getting 100 megabits. I think before we enter into a long-term franchise agreement, Quest needs to figure out what they're going to do to improve the quality of the internet service, the broadband service that they tout as being so great. It is horrible. And for the representative in the audience that's in the area of Pebble Creek Parkway in Virginia, so I would appreciate them taking a look at that before this item comes back for us later this year. Thank you.
Would you like to address any of those responses to those statements?
Certainly. My name is Jeff Mira Sol. I'm the Director of Public Policy and Affairs for CenturyLink, covering the state of Arizona. Councilmember, you gave me some crossroads, but I would say to you that if I can get your address of service, that I will have an engineer look into the situation around your internet speeds. Without knowing exactly how the network is configured at that point, there could be some things that we could do with some of the lines that are in that pedestal that is feeding your home that might be the cause of some of the slowness of your line. So I would take away from tonight the guarantee that I'll get back to you and let you know what the situation is there as far as your internet goes.
I appreciate that, and if you could get my email address from the city, from the staff, and send me an email, I'll be happy to provide that for you. I know that there are several hundred of us in that area that are experiencing the exact same problem, so I'm sure you guys will want to get a look at that. Thank you for listening and the opportunity to stand on the soapbox once again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So are we pulling it off with consent?
So council, I need a motion a second to approve the items 6.1 through 6.6 on the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilmember Fazillo. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Fazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Now, the city clerk will administer the oath of loyalty to Mr. David Harwell, who was appointed to the Board of Adjustments tonight. Mr. Harwell?
Okay, if you'll kindly raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of board member according to the best of my ability, so I do affirm. Congratulations.
Did she not want a picture of him on?
They took a picture while he was being sworn in.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on with the business. I would like to remind council to wait until a motion is on the table prior to asking the questions, all right? So 7.1 is to approve the resolution, and I'm so happy to say this. Should I get up and cheer as I say this, or should I stay stationary? To approve a resolution development agreement for Microsoft. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm pleased to be before you this evening to request the approval of a resolution and a development agreement between the City of Goodyear and Microsoft. As you are aware, the city has been working with Microsoft for some time regarding their development of their property located south of MC85, north of Broadway, and generally between Litchfield Road and Bullard Avenue. Since December, there have been three actions approved by council regarding zoning, lot consolidation, and at-risk construction permits. In addition, the site plan for the Microsoft property was approved with stipulations today. With that said, we are here before council again this evening with a resolution and development agreement to allow for further development of the property. Microsoft has worked with the city regarding the development of an agreement which will allow them to move forward with onsite construction associated with two buildings. In an effort to meet the needs of the customer, the city has developed a self-certification process related to the construction of the buildings and the onsite private engineering improvements. As part of the agreement, Microsoft would waive any claims, including third-party claims, against the city related to self-certification. The property owner understands the risks involved with this process. However, Microsoft is extremely sophisticated in the construction of its facilities and has sufficient financial resources available to undertake such risks. With that said, I want to thank all of the staff that have been involved in this agreement of the development of the self-certification process. But most importantly, I wanted to thank Sarah Chilton in the city attorney's office for her tireless work on this project. I'm pretty sure that we wouldn't be here tonight without her efforts. Finally, and in closing, I am here this evening requesting for council to approve Resolution 2019-1942, approving the development agreement with Microsoft. And thank you, and with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Is there anybody that needs, applicant at all to come forth to talk before? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council for your records. I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group on behalf of the applicant, and I just wanted to say we have very, very much appreciated all the hard work that your management and staff has put into this, your leadership, and we very much look forward to a great relationship with the City of Goodyear. Never seen a staff work so hard, and thank you all for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, sir.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, would anybody in the audience like to speak? And will the city clerk please read Resolution 2019-1942 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1942, approving the development agreement for Microsoft, directing the city manager to execute the development agreement for Microsoft, authorizing and directing actions and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to adopt Resolution 2019-1942? Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard the motion from Councilwoman Kano and a second by Councilwoman Loretano. Open for council discussion, Councilwoman Loretano.
First of all, I want to thank the staff and everyone you mentioned for working so hard to do this self-certification program. I'm sure we will get more, that we'll be able to use this type of program more in the future, and I think it's a great thing for the city to move forward. I want to thank Jordan Rose and the applicant, Microsoft, and welcome them to the City of Goodyear. It is great to have one of the top tech company bringing tech jobs to our city, so we welcome them with open arms, so thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, also thank you to staff as well. And I just wanted to say also the self-certification process, I think, should be a great tool in our toolbox moving forward with different companies as well. So I appreciate all the hard work with staff. And also, yeah, welcome to Microsoft, and we look forward to partnering with you for years to come, and thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Fazillo? All right, well, I recognize you, Councilman Stip.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's hard for me to hear who you're talking to, and sometimes Joe sounds like Bill and whatnot, but I thought for sure I'd be the only one to, I'd be the only one to say that the self-certification thing is probably as big a deal as Microsoft coming, but this whole project has been a huge learning experience, I think, for all of us about what we're capable of and about what we can do as a city. And while we're super excited to bring Microsoft into our, into our community, I think you hear the excitement from the council about the staff reaching beyond, beyond the norm and bringing this through. And Jordan, I know your accolades to the, to the staff are, you know, you were in wonderment of what the staff can do, and I think we all knew what they could do. We just had to let them do it. So congratulations to everybody, Microsoft. Please extend my, my welcome to them, and at this point, I don't think we could be any prouder of our staff or our city. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Councilman Fazillo?
I don't know if there's any much more to add to that except to say I'm looking for a long and fruitful, positive relationship with Microsoft. And again, I know that staff has put a lot of time in here. Sarah, I know you've put a lot of hours in, weekends, extra hours, coming in on your days off to make this thing happen. All the reason why, and I know there was other staff members, but the reason why I mention that is your diligence in making sure that this actually came through fruition. So again, you represent the dedication of our staff and the type of people we have here to make these things happen. So again, I want to thank you for all those efforts and the other standing staff members that helped along the way to pull this off. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Vice Mayor Campbell?
I'm not going to repeat what everybody said, but I agree with everyone. Having family that lives in the Seattle area, I know what a wonderful community partner Microsoft is, and we look forward to a long relationship with them, just making Goodyear better. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank staff. I know the continuum had a lot to do with this. I know it's trickled down to other staff members. Sarah's the person to go to. I've been here since 2005, and she's been the strong one in that law office, and she knows how to write it and say it, so I greatly appreciate it. And what an honor it is for our city to be able to acquire a company like Microsoft. It's, this is a real big move for us, and it's a wonderful move because already it's attracted companies that have come to us. They're sort of like the mother of the group, so we're very excited and very proud because there are other people that are responsible for this. It's the developers, the people that own the land. It happens to be representatives around the valley that have been talking about it. So it's just, it's really a team effort to have acquired them. And so the team effort will continue, and council, for us, it's hard work for this staff. So any, you know, baked cookies, anything you want to take to staff, keep them going. And as you know, because we're getting such attention, it's additional staff we're going to have to bring on for these projects. So we need to support them, and we need to support the staff, so good job. I know you were really pleased to be able to be here tonight to present this. So we're just going to do the right thing, and we're going to roll call. Let's go for it. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Fazillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, we'll go to seven point two, to approve the request for the preliminary plat for the Straya Parcel 11 F1, subject to stipulations. Alex Lotinsky, Planner Two, presenting, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. The preliminary plat before you tonight is parcel 11 F1 in the Lucero community. It is this red circled one in the middle of the screen. It includes approximately 18 acres, which consists of 58 single-family detached lots and six tracts. It is designated low-medium-density residential within the Lucero PAD. The lots in 11 F1 are designed as 60 feet by 120 feet. It's directly connected to parcel 11E, which was approved in December of 2018. The main point of access is off of Hillside Drive, the mouse is lagging a little bit, but I promise it's there. The secondary access comes from that 11E parcel that was approved last, in December. And then just south of parcel 11F1 is the future Lucero Park and parcel 11C. The preliminary plat is in conformance with all development requirements of the PAD and all engineering and planning standards. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on February 13th. This concludes my presentation, Pete Teich is available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then I need a motion a second to approve the preliminary plat for Straya Parcel 11F1, subject to stipulations. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Councilwoman Bazillo. Open for council discussion. No discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill. The ayes have it. All right, let's go to seven point three, a request to approve the budget transfer for Western Avenue Properties. Dan Cotterman, Deputy City Manager, will be presenting, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor and council. With me tonight is Christopher Baker, Development Services Director. He's going to help us with some of the designs that we get to in a little bit. So we are here tonight to once again discuss the city-owned properties at the intersection of Litchfield Road and Western Avenue. And for the benefit of the public who might be watching tonight, the areas outlined in blue and yellow are the properties in question. And for reference, the top of this slide is north, the left there is Litchfield Road, and then the purple bar at the bottom represents where Western Avenue is. This slide is just another view of these same properties from a different perspective. So the last time we were before you was May of 2018, and at that time, council provided staff with direction regarding the site. We were directed to sell the old evidence building and then to develop a plan that would consider retaining the old fire station while creating more parking and creating added green space to screen the parking lot from Litchfield Road. Lastly, we were asked to evaluate whether the site would be a potential home for the train station that's currently in storage at the Public Works campus. So since that time, the old evidence facility has been sold, and staff has developed three design concepts that attempt to address your goals. And so we're here tonight to share these design concepts with you and get your direction on moving forward. Before we get into the design concepts, we wanted to take a moment to discuss the train station and whether or not it would fit on this property. The first thing we had to do was determine how much land the train station would require, and then after that, look to see if relocating it there would still leave enough space for additional parking and additional green space that you had asked us to look at. In short, the train station does fit, and it will allow for additional parking and green space. One of the three concepts that Christopher is going to walk you through in a moment does contemplate moving the train station to this campus. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Christopher, and we're going to go through the next three slides.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, Mayor and council. As Dan indicated, we took to heart the direction that council had provided in order to evaluate this property and provide you some preliminary design concepts for you to consider and to provide us additional direction to move forward. What we did is, we actually conceived a interdepartmental, multidisciplinary team that included both planning, engineering, and CIP, parks and recreation, as well as Public Works and facilities. So the team all came together, we all, each of us have a different perspective and expertise that was lended throughout this project. So I'd just like to thank the team, including Alex Listinsky, Diana Williamson, David Side, Walt, and Martin Hussey. So we want to thank them for their effort and contributions. So as this option here, and there are really no particular order, all this one says Option A, this option really contemplated removing all of the facilities off the current property. That includes the existing fire station, and this option does not relocate the existing train station. What you'll notice, up at the northern end, move the pointer here, maybe. There it is. So you'll see this almost inverted snowman, and then this sort of X, if you will. This concept is based on providing the community a skate park. That's a recreational opportunity that is not provided in other locations in the city. As you know, we also contemplated maybe a pool and things of that nature, but there's Loma Linda Pool a little bit to the north. So the team came together and thought we should design an option based on something that is not offered anywhere else in the city. So that is what these two things are. So this is a sunken depression that has concrete ramps for skating, and these are just other kind of skid plates, if you will. There's the addition of landscape and green space around there, as well as a restroom facility, which is located right here. And then you'll notice that this is an enhanced, this is a paved parking area to provide, as Dan indicated, a net increase in the amount of parking that's provided on the site. So, design option B is, this is the same orientation as Dan alluded to, Litchfield to the west, Yuma a little bit fir, excuse me, western a little bit further on the, on the south-southern end. This is the existing fire station. And what it contemplates is the removal of the old jail facility adjacent to it, but does in fact keep the driveway to Litchfield Road and keeps this facility for future use. You'll notice this building right here, this rectangle, that is the relocated and refurbished train station, along with parking out in front, the sidewalk connection to that parking, and then also enhanced additional parking provided here onsite as well. This big box right here is what we call, the design team came up with, sort of an enhancement opportunity. If you think about that alleyway, if you will, it is the back of the buildings that face western, but there is an opportunity to embrace that if the fire station remains and maybe has some doors or what have you put on the south side of the building, and could be redeveloped, much like the Phoenix, the Heritage Square in Phoenix, where it's a pedestrian, it could be a pedestrian-oriented, you close the ends off at particular times for events or so forth. If somebody wanted to rent this out for, let's just say, I'm making things up, but maybe a wedding or so forth, you could have things out in the back. It is, obviously, that current alley is not all that desirable, but there is an opportunity in the future, should there be redevelopment activity take place there. So this option includes the placement and refurbishment of the existing train station and the refurbishment of the existing fire station and the removal of the other buildings. You'll notice that there's a green area between the two buildings here. This is an open green space type area that could be used for gatherings or other type of community events. The last option that we have here provides the enhanced parking along here, on the east side of the project. It retains the existing fire station, and then really one large lawn. It could be brick pavers, which is just what's kind of drawn in here with, with green space that could be used for community events and things of that nature. And then this one just simply also shows how the, an approved alley could, could further enhance the, the train sta, excuse me, the fire station that's located right there. So three very distinct options. One that has the train station and two that don't. They each provide different benefits and frankly, some cons to the community as well. These are not just the only options, I'd like to say. There's some other options that could be considered, but these are the ones that the design team presented to city manager's office, and we elected to move forward, just for you to consider in, in your deliberations. Any particular questions on the background and thought on?
If you'll wait till a motion, then I can do that.
Excuse me, yes, it's a business line.
Is the presentation finished? You have more, Dan?
Yes. A little bit more, Mayor, thank you. So thank you, Christopher. So we thought we would take a moment here and walk you through some of the major cost components of each of the options. We've grouped a lot of things into these categories to just sort of help you understand where the major cost elements are of each option, should you decide to create an à la carte option, for example, as Christopher was alluding to. But just to walk through this, so you know what we're talking about, Option A in the upper-left corner of the slide, total project $1.85 million. Demolition is $526,000, site work $785,000, site features $99,000, and the skate park that was shown $445,000. So I won't read that through the other options, but if we have to come back to this at the end when you are deliberating, certainly can do that. And while we understand that there are likely different opinions as to which option is the best fit for this property, we wanted to present you with a staff recommendation that we felt best met the vision that you shared with us in May. And so our option is to go with option, I'm sorry, our recommendation is to go with Option C, total project cost of $3.2 million, but broken out into two phases. As you heard earlier this evening, you know, there's a lot of pressure on the CIP, so we're thinking, how could we get something going quickly at the site? And so the first site would, I'm sorry, the first phase would be to demo the two buildings, the old PD buildings in the back, and create some temporary parking. And so we estimate this phase to cost $670,000. And if council has supported this option, we are asking for your approval to transfer these funds from the CIP reserve, and we will begin immediately on that portion of it. Phase two of the project would be brought back to you in a future CIP. And so we thought that by breaking these into two phases, it would allow us to get immediate benefit from reducing the ongoing maintenance of these aging properties, as well as provide some immediate parking relief. As you know, parking at this location is an ongoing concern for the businesses located in that complex, as parking is very limited. In fact, the city is currently leasing six of our spaces to one of the property owners there because they have no parking. So this concludes our presentation, and we are here to answer your questions.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
All right.
Mark Pelletier?
I'll just remind the speakers as they come up that you have three minutes. We all alike will let you have 20 seconds left to speak before you begin, speak and identify yourself clearly by stating your name. Welcome.
My name is Mark Pelletier. Good evening, Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Campbell, members of the council. I'm here officially representing the Three Rivers Historical Society, I'm the president. So hold up your hands if you can guess where I'm going. I've only been in Goodyear for 12 years. There are others, speaker cards, the folks are going to talk, focus more a little on the historical significance of the properties here. Rather, I'd like to talk about opportunity. And I think that's what we have here, and that's what we need to capitalize on. I certainly don't want to minimize the value of green space or even parking, they're all important. The city realized the opportunity which existed with the train depot and saved it from its prior use. And unfortunately, there are, as we know, there are many, many considerations and costs there. I'm certainly happy to see that that possibly could be included here. But the opportunity to save and preserve some of our history is what I want to focus on. I have something in common with the City of Goodyear, we're both in our 73rd year. And speaking as an individual person, I can tell you how much my past is more and more of what I'm thinking of. That's different with the city. The city has a past, and it has much more of a future than any individual. Goodyear has capitalized on new and, and current things. We have at least two facilities for Amazon that I know of. We now are welcoming Microsoft here. So no one can accuse us of being staved, but we do have a history. And being a young city, relatively little, little history. So I think it's vitally important, even with the competing demands on money, to do, to take the opportunities that become available for us to preserve our history. You know, we've witnessed, Sonny and Jennifer Gutierrez are single-handedly preserving Old Town Goodyear, and they're to be commended for that efforts. We should try and capitalize and join them there. The folks across the street that are working on the flight property, again, preserving some of that history. So I implore you very much to get behind this sort of activity. I appreciate that the recommendation of staff is to proceed, even in a phased, I would hope that possibly Phase C could move to Phase B. I'm a train guy, so I'm very much in favor of that. But unfortunately, the Three Rivers Historical Society doesn't have a lot of money that we can contribute, but I can guarantee you, we will support the effort with manpower, with publicity, and as much support and involvement as we can provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Sally Keiko? No? Joseph Kinney? Oh.
Sally, you said that she wasn't going to speak, so I'm not sure if she will or not.
Okay.
I'm Joseph Kinney, First Vice President of Three Rivers Historical Society. Tonight, I'm not speaking for Three Rivers, I'm speaking for another organization, the Historical Litchfield Corridor Association. We've been working the last two weeks diligently on two issues. This is one, the Litchfield Railroad Station is the other. Wally knows how, how long I've been working on this. We're doing two different ways approaching this fire station. We're talking with the Firemen's Union for one. But also, besides the Litchfield Historic Corridor Association, we also have the Litchfield Historic Corridor Partnership. If we need to buy it versus it being donated. I met this morning with our attorney, Paul Faith and Michael Faith. Right there, what most people don't know, besides the fire station, we have the Scout Lodge, or as Paul corrected me today, the Scout Hut, which is a very important building. And people don't even know it's there, but we're trying to save both of those. We're looking for Option D, that we meet with staff, go over the possibilities. The people I'm working with, DJ Burton, Flight, Sonny and Jennifer, Sonny's Box and Jim. If you haven't seen what they've done there, that's incredible. I've got a call in today to Linda Bayless, I want to hear back from her. And then Bill and Sandy Simon, who have the Luke Historic Museum right there. We're all working together. And just on the depot part, I'm talking to Cavco, because when I talked with DJ, we said that thing's been sitting on our trailer for 10 years. Before we move it, we've got to look at it, make sure it's structural. It's a double-wide mobile home. Who does that? Cavco. I have a relationship with them, I've talked to Cavco. I don't want to put all my cards on the table about moving it, setting it right next to them on the old railroad easement. Who can rebuild a home like that? That would be Cavco. If not, we have other people, and we're looking for land, the old railroad easement, maybe not everybody knows where that is, is between Flight and the airport. DJ owns that easement behind his property. We've got the two ponds, I hope I'm not losing people on this. The two ponds and the little bridge next to the entrance to the airport. If we have to, we can go there with the depot. We want it on that railroad line, because we've got rolling stock we can add to it. This can be big. The fire station with the fire union, that can be big, and the Scout Lodge also. The fire station with the fire union, that can be big, and the Scout Lodge also. We've got more to say, but, uh, I want staff to reach me. Option D. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. So that we can start, uh, discuss this, I'd like to have a motion, a second, to approve the budget transfer in the amount of six hundred and sixty-nine thousand from the general fund portion of the capital project reserve for the Western Avenue properties. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Heard a motion from Councilman Laura Tonno and a second from Councilman Fazillo. All right, open for council discussion. Councilman Laura Tonno.
I, I guess I'll start. Um, I, I'm kind of with option D. I didn't, wasn't really, first of all, thank you for all your hard work. I think the staff did a lot of hard work to try to think of, it's a very odd-shaped property, they're old buildings, some of them are deteriorating. I, what you sent was lovely, but that's not my vision, um, so I couldn't support any of those three. I like option D, and I like option D because when this first came to us, I would, I said, you know, I want to save those, at least those three buildings up at the front that face it, um, because those, we don't have any historical buildings really in Goodyear. Um, we are very limiting on what we have. Um, so I, I would like to see us go back, see what we can do to save those buildings. I know we talked about the, though there was going to be maybe a fire museum, let, let's kind of explore those areas, um, because, you know what? My kids were born, and they've lived their whole life here. I'd like to have them some history. When they come back and see Grandma and Grandpa, I can take them, take my grandkids, hopefully, to the trains, train park, um, you know, so I, I would like to see you go back. Nothing against you guys, I think you did a wonderful job, they're very nice plants, they're just not what my vision, so, thank you. I'm D.
And your plan B is in board. D is in dock.
D is in dock. Okay, thank you. Councilman Hampton?
So, I'm the same, kind of the same way. I mean, I agree, I like, in my mind, I, first I'll start at the beginning, so, thank you so much for, for putting it all together, and I think they're great ideas, and I just see it maybe different. So, first of all, did we have, been people that were interested in buying those properties at one point, correct?
No. We never put it up for sale.
Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, we did not offer those properties for sale. There was an RFP put out, uh, maybe about two years ago at this point, uh, soliciting nonprofits might be interested in using them.
It was the nonprofits that were interested, right? I thought there were some organizations that were interested in it at one point.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that. And then, I mean, I personally, I like keeping the fire and the ones that are, I'm not sure which one the law, the Boy Scout Lodge was, but really keeping the fires, the fire station and then at least the one directly north of that. So, I see like one, two, three, and then the other, other buildings go in the opposite direction.
So, this is the fire station here?
Yeah.
This structure is technically one building, looks like a Z maybe?
Yeah.
I believe that's... Yes, what I'm hearing is this facility at the far north was originally a separate structure, and at some point, maybe in the seventies, it was added on to.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, I'd be in favor of the Scout Lodge, the fire station, but then get, I could, I could get rid of the, the one that's angled differently than the rest, making that still parking to help alleviate the rest of the parking down there, and then maybe using that, that alleyway as a future event type area, I like that as well. But yeah, I don't know if I could get rid of the, all the history there. So, at least the, at least the, the fire station and the, maybe the Scout Lodge there too.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I guess I like the D, like the pursue, the D delta option to see where the fire, wherever we could hopefully keep some of those historic buildings, maybe not all, not all of it, but, and then also the, see where we can put the train station at a different location. That's what I have. Thank you.
Councilman Kano?
I, um, I love history, and I am also a member of the Three Rivers Historical Society, however, um, not been a part of these decision makings and things. Uh, in advance of this, I did walk through all of those buildings, uh, including the fire building, and then we traveled over to look at the condition. I wanted to see the train station, uh, firsthand, and it is not in, in great condition. Um, I see definitely a vision for the firehouse. I, I, I know the history of all those buildings. They were built by the residents here. Uh, it was, um, it, it's so foundational to Goodyear, the Western Avenue, across the street, Bayless, and of course, the Flight Project. This is such an integral corner for us, but realistically, as I look at those other buildings, and I think you look, start looking at asbestos and, and building and things like that, I don't know if it is cost prohibitive, and I would be interested to hear why those buildings were omitted from the plan. Was there something that you, um, saw in that, or, uh, something that, uh, caused those other buildings to be excluded from the proposal?
Let me just make sure I understand the question. So, the question is, were there environmental concerns in the buildings we're proposing tearing down?
Correct, or other concerns that, uh, precluded them from being offered as an option?
I think the best way to answer that is, so we did an environmental assessment on all of those buildings, including the one fronting Western Avenue at that time, and there are a few issues in all of the buildings. Some, I think they all had lead paint, some had some asbestos and roof penetrations, one of them had more, uh, in the flooring material than another. So, there, there weren't any major issues, but they all had something that needed to be remediated. I think where the recommendation to just keep the one facility, the old fire station, came from the May twenty-eighteen council direction in that work session. So, we, we walked away with that direction at that time to look at demolishing the other buildings in order to accommodate the additional parking and green space, so that's where that came from.
Okay, so those other buildings were, uh, initially set up as government buildings, um, I mean, office space and various police functions, and, uh, it's kind of a, hard to catch a vision for what it could be used for even, uh, inside. Now, let's, I want to ask about option C, the phase one, would that, uh, leave the fire station as is now, and then install the park, or what would happen at phase one?
So, phase one would leave the fire station as it is today, and just continue to maintain it, hopefully to keep it from deteriorating any further. Um, then it would involve tearing down the other structures in the back on the north part there. Um, there would be some site work needed to be done. It would be the full design for the ultimate build out, and then we would install temporary parking, uh, using probably a decomposed granite type material that would meet the county standards for dust abatement. Um, and then lighting, some accessible parking would be asphalt with curb, um, minders, whatever those are called, little concrete curb minders, some striping, that type of thing would be phase one.
Okay, thank you. Um, and secondly, on phase two, with the fire, uh, station under option three, uh, do you have a vision for programming it or partnerships at this point, or are we just saying that would be a conversation going forward?
We have lots of ideas, nothing is determined. It would be fleshed out in further conversation, uh, with all the interested stakeholders and what's the best way to leverage that asset. Um, the option C would bring it to current building code while maintaining the historic nature of it, so we would look to, um, maintain or preserve its historical nature while still getting it to current building, uh, code.
One last question, uh, regarding the Train Depot. If it is not implemented in one of the options, would this be then be an asset that the city at some point would divest itself of? I mean, would we either, I don't know if you can donate, but would you transfer ownership of the property in some manner?
On the train station?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm, I'm looking over here to my friend on how that, that would happen, um...
If council gave that direction, we could probably figure out a way to, to do that.
So, yes.
Okay, exactly. No, it can't sit on the trailer forever.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fazillo?
You know, I kind of...
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Okay, well, uh, if you just hold it, I, I, I'll...
I'll hold.
Yes, I've got to let Councilmember Fazillo, because this is the second time you, it's with you have been neck and neck, so, he's, he's the winner on this one. Go ahead, Councilman.
As far as this, uh, history concerned, I can see some of the options that I could go with, but my bigger concern is after seeing the CIP meeting tonight, um, I'm not really ready at this point to do any transfer of any funds, uh, or how this thing's going to be scheduled without seeing that five-year plan, what is in there fully funded, how it's being funded, and what was pushed out, until I can see the entire picture to see where, because you're looking at some millions of dollars on some of these options you have in there, and I don't know if I want to take a, uh, to me, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense moving for a partial phase, and then four, five years later, or six years later, as a result of the money we have, put phase two in. It just, to me, wouldn't make any sense, so, as an entire piece, and again, I agree on saving some of the historicals, but I, I would prefer to see the entire five-year and then what was pushed out before I, I am able to, uh, vote for anything as far as moving funds.
Vice Mayor? Oh, sorry, I'm so glad you reminded me. Councilmember Stip, you're on.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Um, so, I, um, I, I generally, uh, I don't know if "fringe" is the right word, but, um, oftentimes, the mayor, you will, you will give the council a hard time about sending mixed messages to the staff. Um, and tonight, as I sit here, that's exactly what I'm hearing, uh, because several months ago, it was pretty clear, we all were in agreement to, uh, take the two buildings down, leave the fire station up, and then come back with a plan for the rest of it. And tonight, here we sit, saying, well, maybe there's a, maybe there's another option, maybe there's something else, um, and, and we don't know even the financial, um, the financial outcomes, as Councilmember Fazillo pointed out, um, these, these properties as, uh, as wonderfully historic as, as they, as they can be, um, really are, are beyond, uh, are beyond salvage. Uh, even the nine-one-one building is going to be kind of a stretch, which is the old fire station, but I think we're trying to make a commitment to do that, uh, preserve some of the history, and maybe not all of it. So, um, you know, I, I was ready to say I'm, uh, I'm in support of, of the, the staff's recommendation, however, Councilmember Fazillo's point tonight about, um, maybe until we know what the, what the full plan is, maybe we shouldn't do anything at all, and, uh, and look to table this tonight. Um, so I don't have a firm landing on a position, um, other than, um, I don't think we should be, um, excuse me, keeping the two buildings that are in, uh, such disrepair that, um, we, we should be taking those down and then figure out what we're going to do with the rest. Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
All right, uh, first I'd like to clear up the, uh, confusion. Neither Councilmember Lauren Tonno nor I were in favor ever of just keeping two of them and not the others. That was not part of the discussion. I never understood that we gave you direct, uh, orders or suggestions to save the fire station. That, that to me never came up. No one ever spoke to me about the train station, and I am, uh, Chair of the Litchfield Historic Train Station Foundation. We have been raising money to restore that train station for many, many years. Unfortunately, my city does not or has not, uh, been interested in locating that train station and putting it so we could do something with it. We've had this conversation for the last ten years, that we've been waiting to do something with the train station. We never would have put it on the Western Avenue property in Litchfield Road. It is not big enough, because our vision from the beginning when we bought this train station, before I ever came on council, and I was on that committee that found it and persuaded the city to purchase it from a farmer, was that this would go and become a train park, that we would secure renovations by raise, by, uh, putting together a 501(c)(3) foundation, which we have. Every year, we've been raising funds. We've talked to the railroads, we've talked to railroad clubs, they're all interested in helping us refurbish that building, and Councilmember Kano is correct, it can't sit there forever, but we have not wanted it to sit there forever. We have wanted something done to it, but until the city could find a location for it, we could not do anything on our own. The question of saving the, these buildings, I never, and I thought when we got the proposal of two point five million for all of the property, that all of the property would go up to sale, for sale, to see if we could recoup that money. But somehow, that didn't come out of the meetings I attended, and I missed it, and we only sold the one building. We did have 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations approach our city and ask to use those buildings as is, so that they could provide needed services to our community residents, and the city said no, that the buildings were in too disrepair, that there was too much environmental problems with it. So, they were not allowed to do it, otherwise, people would be using those buildings today and preserving them as they are. So, the city's option to move forward, uh, is, I'm just astounded, I'm astounded by the cost of these design concept, uh, clearly not, not thinking we're going to hopefully do something to the entire Western Avenue corridor. For your information, the Bayless Center has now sold. It is in escrow, and until I know what they're going to do with that center, I don't want to do anything across the street so that we can enhance what they're going to do. I see trying to save the fire station, I suppose I don't, it doesn't look like a fire station, and it isn't a fire station. It resembles a fire station. Uh, no one has talked to me about saving a fire station, so, I get it, but what are you going to do with it? Unless we're going to open these buildings up for all of the public to enjoy, all of the residents, I'm not in favor of doing anything with them. I do like to preserve, like everyone else. I belong to Three Rivers, I belong to Litchfield Park, I belong to Phoenix Historical Society. I am a history buff as well, but you've got to be realistic, and we cannot justify spending six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars on something that's not going to benefit all of our residents, especially when we're trying to do a rec center and get these fire stations up and running. So, we have to decide our priorities. I'm thrilled to think that the citizens are now stepping forward and trying to tell us what they want in their city, and I hope they are very successful in getting their association up and running, and I support their efforts. If they want to buy those buildings from us eventually, or do a partnership, I think we should have a conversation with them. That's all I can say. But our train station is very much something we want to do. We want to put it by a spur, we want to bring a caboose in, we want to bring a locomotive in. We've got people that have a small train, that they're willing to run it in our park, but until we find a location, we can't even master plan it, and we can't go after the big grants because of that. So, that's all I can say. It's probably way too much.
Well, you had an opportunity to say it, though. That's important. So, I do not see council at all coming together on this. We have an open motion on the floor. Is it better just to, uh, vote on it, turn it down, or...
You can either take that, take that action, or you can just make a motion to table it and, uh, get staff the opportunity to meet.
And so, tabling it means timeframe of some sort?
Table it indefinitely at this point.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, may I make a motion to table it indefinitely?
Yes.
All right, do I hear a second? All right, I heard a motion by, uh, Vice Mayor, and a second by, uh, Kano, I think, did that. Oh, all right, you did it, Councilmember Fazillo, you both did it. All right, so we're going to vote on that. All right, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Hundred percent opposed.
No. In favor to oppose it, to table it?
To table it, yes.
Okay.
But we opposed what we said. Is that all right? You're getting real pecky up here on this, I should know. Okay, is everybody... All right, so let's go on to seven point four, as a request to approve the citywide landscaping maintenance contract. David Side, Parks and Recreation Manager, presenting. David?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to present tonight's next agenda item pertaining to landscaping.
It's my pleasure to present tonight's next agenda item pertaining to landscape maintenance services. As you're aware, the city owns and operates a wide variety of facilities and service delivery to the residents. Some of those facilities require landscape maintenance as part of the operations of those facilities. Our parks, for example, we perform that landscape maintenance in-house with in-house crews. And there are other facilities, such as the ones I'm bringing up, that require a contracted vendor to provide those landscaping services. Some of those examples are our public safety, fire station, police building, water, wastewater facilities, and this facility complex that we're at here tonight. Here's a little bit of the data to kind of give you an idea of the magnitude. Over 10 million square foot of landscape maintenance. We have over 50 city facilities, and those could be as small as a small well site or as large as this complex that we're in. There's over 1,800 palm trees, over 650 large canopy trees. And we define a large canopy tree as over 30 feet tall. So that's kind of out of our in-house ramp to perform that. So it's a little bit of a niche service that we go ahead and get outsourced. And obviously, we're growing with every project that comes online. I want to take a few slides and kind of take us back to how we got here. So if you recall, in September of 2017, the city issued a formal invitation for bid for landscape maintenance services. The bid opportunity listed each area individually, and it gave each respondent the opportunity to bid each area individually, which gave the city flexibility in determining which was the most cost-effective way of obtaining landscape maintenance services. After reviewing the bid responses, the city recommended a dual award to both Somerset Landscape LLC and Mariposa Landscape Inc. as each company had bids that were favorable to the city for different areas. In March of 2018, just under a year ago, I was before you for a similar expenditure of funds request pertaining to the Somerset portion of the contract. Because that contract was over the $500,000 council approval threshold, brought that before you for that expenditure approval, and you went ahead and approved that, which gave us technically two contracts. We had an A contract with Somerset with the ceiling amount of $1,021,600. And we had that same contract, but a B version of that for $60,000 for Mariposa Landscape Inc. After that approval, we had two city contract vendors on contract to provide that service. In April of 2018, both Somerset and Mariposa started services. Shortly after beginning services, Somerset began to fall behind and become contractually non-compliant. Areas of non-compliance included missed palm tree and shrub trimming deadlines as well as missed pre-emergent weed applications. In response, the city and Somerset held several meetings to discuss the deficiencies and plan strategies to meet the maintenance contract obligations. Following these discussions, Somerset continued to be contractually non-compliant, and as a result, was issued a formal notice to cure by procurement in September of 2018. Following several more months of contractual non-compliance, the city issued a formal contract cancellation notice in December and began using Mariposa Landscape LLC exclusively for all landscape maintenance services. As a result, Mariposa Landscape Inc. now performs all contracted landscape maintenance services throughout the city. This annual amount is estimated at $1,081,600. Since it is forecasted that the Mariposa will exceed $500,000 council expenditure threshold by the fiscal year end, I come tonight requesting approval of the expenditure of funds associated with Contract 18-4136B to Mariposa Landscape Inc. in the amount of $557,300. Before I conclude my presentation, I do want to emphasize that there are no new funds being requested related to this council action. All funds related to this expenditure request were already approved as part of the FY '19 budget process and are available within the various departmental budgets. And with that, I conclude my presentation and be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? I need a motion, a second, to approve the expenditure in the amount of $557,300 for the landscape maintenance services and award a contract to Mariposa Landscaping Inc. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell in the second room, Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilman Fazillo?
Yeah, I know it's been trying with all the rain to try to stay up on this maintenance, but I think it's really important, and I appreciate the job that you're doing out there to make sure this is done. The pristiness of our city is important, especially when we're recruiting businesses to come. We want to be a city that's looking on the way up, not a city that's on the way down. So I appreciate the trimming. I appreciate every hea- doing to try to stay ahead of these weeds. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other responses? Bill? All right, so...
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Since there's no more questions left, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right. 7.5 is a proposal to authorize the use of condemnation from the acquisition of portions of Riggs Road. Linda Beals is back, our real estate coordinator, to represent. Linda?
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you noted, we're looking for authorization tonight to allow for the use of eminent domain, if necessary, for acquisitions for the Riggs Road rights of way. As many of you are aware, back in 2016, we entered into a renewal agreement with Arizona Public Service for an emission reduction, credit maintenance, and cost-sharing program. As part of that agreement, our obligations require us to continue to maintain Riggs Road, which means we also have to own the entirety of that road between Rainbow Valley Road and Bullard Avenue. Back several months ago, we brought to you the donations from Newland, the Newland entities, for your acceptance. That equated to approximately 90% of that area. We have been working toward acquiring the rest of the rights away from the other individuals. We have worked through getting the legal descriptions. We have the appraisals. We made offers. And in most cases, we've been able to locate the owners. But some of these properties were bought back in the 1970s, and they are, in many cases, property owners that do not live on site. A couple, we believe, are out of state. One, we believe, is in Chicago. We found a relative. We're still working through it. But we do have a deadline. We need to be paving in September. We believe there may be a couple of these that we're just not going to locate, and we'll need to go through the process through the, maybe through the courts, or maybe we'll find other ways to locate them. We'll keep working on that. There's also a possibility that one or two, or we're not sure how many, of the other property owners, as we continue to work through them, we may find a situation where they just might not be willing to accept the offers or to finish closing, or any number of things could happen. So what we're looking for tonight is the ability to be able to move forward quickly with, to go into an eminent domain if we need to, to move forward with the project.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2019-1938 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1938, authorizing the city attorney to bring actions as necessary under the power of eminent domain to acquire rights of way needed for Riggs Road if city staff is unable to acquire such property interest by negotiation.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2019-1938? Do you ever hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Was that, oh, I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton, very low one.
Sorry.
And a second by Vice Mayor Campbell. So roll call vote, please.
Mayor, was there any discussion?
Oh, sorry.
No.
Any discussion?
We're good.
All right, let's do a roll call. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Mayor? Wait.
Yes, yes, Bill.
Too late.
You're up for discussion.
That was quick. I do have a couple of questions of Linda. How long have we been trying to contact these folks?
We started trying to contact back about eight months ago. Initially, when we started, I sent out questionnaires to try to get contact information. We started out with assessors' records, sent out a mailing that just said, to provide us, explain the project, ask for email information, phone numbers, preferred addresses, preferred contact times, preferred contact type. We started with that. Then we sent out the offer letters. Those were sent out back in December. And since then, with a couple of the, with several of them that we haven't been able to locate, make certain that we've been able to get those offer packages to the correct party. We've also sent out a second mailing after the offer package, just saying, we are in the process of doing this. We want to make sure you received your offer package. Would you please call me at your earliest convenience or send me an email? So we've been working on it for a while, and we've been making pretty regular contacts, trying to locate the ones we haven't been able to locate.
But this past December is when we made the formal offers?
Correct.
So that was just two months ago.
Right. And we don't plan on moving forward with eminent domain until we know that we either, we cannot locate the parties or we come to an impasse where we know that we are not going to be able to acquire the property. We're going to continue to reach out. And, I mean, today alone, I was talking to a relative of one of the property owners, someone I believe that's in Chicago, trying to get a phone number and address, some way to get ahold of them, other than the address that we're using that doesn't seem to be getting the information to her.
So if we're still going to continue to work this, why are we taking a council action on it tonight as opposed to when we actually need to use it instead of when we might need to use it? And the reason that I ask that question is government condemnation of property and taking of that property through eminent domain is a, it's a very drastic government process. And obviously, nothing that we enter into lightly, but it's a pretty significant event for us. And I think before we just give, you know, we ask the council to give the staff the authority to go into it with the possibility that we still may come through, almost seems a little cart before the horse. And then I do have one follow-up question when you're done answering that.
And Councilmember Stip, this is Roy. I will jump in on this. We did carefully evaluate the timing. Certainly, Linda's been working on this for a number of months. It is a process working backwards from when we actually need to start the process, allowing time to update the appraisals, working through the various legal steps, and then getting a case filed and getting through a order of immediate possession with the court. So we could wait probably a bit longer, but I wouldn't recommend waiting much longer. So we just wanted to build some flexibility into the process, recognizing there are some hard deadlines, given the contract we have with APS and the assurances we gave to APS on when the project would be done so as not to expose APS to their PM10 credit issue in November. So working with city staff, looking at the CIP program, working backwards from when the project has to be done contractually with APS, and building in a little bit of time for getting appraisals updated and all the legal requirements and steps done prior to filing an eminent domain action, we felt as prudent to come to council at this juncture.
I'd like to interject there. The PM10 ramifications will cause us hours of work with a huge stack of papers to turn in. We deal this in MAG all the time, TC. You should not, in my view, delay this. I think that we need that, to put that time in. And Bill, the government's really slow on responding. Okay, so if there's partially that we need something from them, they don't react quickly. So I won't make a decision yet till we vote here, but that's part of this. Any other comments?
I kind of...
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I understand that, and I'm, you know, I'm looking at this timeline, and it just shut down on my computer. But I think we started this thing with this dance with APS in 2016.
That's right.
So, and the surprise of needing this property has been around for a couple of years. So I'm just...
So do we want another, do we want another two years or do we want to close this up, you know?
No, no, no. I'm not, I'm not looking for a debate. I'm just making, I'm just pointing out where we're at. Because I can't, and the last question I had was, when was the last time we went through a condemnation process? Because in my memory, I can't think of one.
It's been approximate.
We considered, but we didn't go through with them.
Yeah, we considered it, but we never, that came and went very quickly.
Well, let's just put it up.
Are your questions answered? Because if they are, I think we ought to just put it up for vote here and see where we are.
My last question was, when was the last time the City of Good Year went through a condemnation process and took property?
My recollection, five or six years ago, was on a roadway issue by the CTCA.
Oh, yes. Yes, it was.
I'm looking at Linda. Bill, you can't see me.
No, that was, I mean, that was part of Van Buren, so that's even older.
I guess the answer is we don't frequently do it, and we take it very seriously when we bring these actions in front of council. But given this case, and we did enter this contract with APS a couple of years ago. It is something Engineering's been working, programming funds, and getting the project put together. It is a serious issue for APS. They did meet with us a couple of months ago because it's a serious issue for them.
It's a serious issue for cities.
It is.
No, it's a serious issue in and of itself, and that's why I'm, I'm just pointing out. I mean, we're backs, our backs are against the wall. And we have a situation where, two years ago, we knew we needed to do this, but we waited until December of 2018 to get started with final offers. And I just, I'm left with no choice but to vote for it because of the ramifications that it has to the greater good of the city. But I think if we just go without any discussion about our taking an action of taking someone's property from them or parts of their property, and granted, we're giving them fair market value, but it's still a, we're still taking an action against that property. We should, we should make sure that we have gone through every effort to avoid it. And I'm not necessarily sure that we have, but I don't have any choice but to vote in support of the item. And that is my last question and comment.
Bill, one thing, Mr. Stig, one of the things that we would like to mention is that we didn't start the process recently. The process actually takes a significant amount of time. One, we had to have the budget monies available. When those became available, then we began working on the legal descriptions. The legal descriptions took us a little bit longer than we expected. It was a five-mile strip of property. We worked heavily with Newland. And some of the legal descriptions needed to be realigned slightly to mesh with what they expected to donate. We also then had to make sure we had the money available for the acquisitions and, because we didn't want to start appraisal reports prior to having money to start acquisitions because those appraisal reports staledate. So we ordered the title reports, then we ordered the appraisal reports, then we had them reviewed as per the standard, the standards that we need to use per state and federal guidelines. And then, once all of that was pulled together, it was only at that time we were able to start the acquisitions. So... So what looks like two years quickly becomes a much shorter deadline to get through and the timelines. And like I said, we didn't expect the, some of the stuff to take as long as it did was with regard to the legal descriptions and/or getting some of the monies available for the project.
Thank you, Linda.
Are you ready to, are you ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Step?
May.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go to information items. Does the council have any comments, updates, requests for information? Councilman Pizzillo?
Listen, I want to send out a big kudos to the staff. I made a call in this morning. Somebody dumped a sofa just west of Litchfield Road on Palm Valley Boulevard, right on the walkway, with some other garbage. And when I took the next ride out, it was gone. So again, thanks for the quick response, keeping our city clean, for those that unnecessarily are disrespecting it, you know? So again, I want to thank Public Works, I assume it was Public Works, that, that took that action. And whoever it was, I want to thank you for the quick response to cleaning up our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Lortano?
I want to thank Parks and Rec and the Ballpark staff. Opening day was wonderful.
Ah, it was.
And the fact that they got the field ready after the, you know, basically the hurricane of water that we had, it looked great. It was wonderful. I don't know how many people, if we have the numbers yet, but it was wonderful, so I hope we have a great season.
Since you said that, let's give them a round of applause for that one. Councilmember Kano?
I attended the Chamber Commerce Breakfast with the four city managers of the area, along with the mayor, vice mayor, and other council members, with Litchfield Park, Talison, Avondale, and of course, Goodyear. And it's so interesting to hear the stories. Litchfield with their 3.5 square miles versus us with our 190 square miles. Litchfield Park is not built out yet, but they have big plans. But the big takeaway is the camaraderie between the cities. They all said, when one city wins, we all win. And I just think that that's really unique in the Southwest Valley, is that working together and that cheering each other on.
Councilman Hampton?
I went to the Dinner on the Diamond, which was a great event, too, celebrating our 10-year anniversary with our partnership with the different teams, and also the big reveal of the new mascot, which was fun as well. And it seemed like a good, it was a good day. Glad the weather worked out for us. It was a sunny day for opening day. We didn't have to cancel like some of the other spring trainings did as well. But I think it's a, yeah, it was exciting. Opening day is an exciting time, a good celebration of our teams and, and fun. So my, my family enjoyed it, and I know a lot of people enjoyed it as well, so.
Any other?
No, I was at everything, and it was wonderful.
Yeah, I thought opening, opening day was spectacular. And the, the, the field looked premier. And Mr. Costellini was very pleased with it. So we already got one, one high vote from him, so we're looking good. All right, let's go on. City manager, do you have any information?
Yes, I do. In fact, I have some information on the spring training day and the numbers that we had there. And despite the cooler weather and rain leading up to opening day, the sun came out for opening day, and it was a great kickoff to a cele, to celebrate our 10-year anniversary. More than 10,000 fans attended the games this weekend, 5,028 on opening day and 5,022 on Sunday. Thank you to Mayor and council members for helping introduce the new mascot. He's so cute.
Cute.
And it's been well received by the fans, and there's still time to help name the mascot on social media.
Yes.
So an opportunity there. Overall, operations ran smooth throughout the weekend. Spring training games are being played every day until March 24th. We also had Abrazo West. They held their annual rescue roundup on Saturday, February 23rd. Abrazo West Rescue Roundup, fortunately, attendance was very light because of the weather. Goodyear Fire Community Educators, along with two of our fire cadets, participated in the child car seat check portion. There were approximately 10 to 12 cars that participated in the car seat checks. Fire Engine 184 and Goodyear Police were in attendance as part of the contingent of police and fire static displays. And then finally, I have a request. City council has requested future work sessions for texting while driving and scooters. There is current legislation being worked on for each of those items. So we would like to put these work sessions on hold pending the outcome of the state legislation, if that is okay with Mayor and council.
That's, that's, that's probably pretty smart to do, because we'll end up having to change it if, if, depending on what their statement comes out, so.
I'm seeing many nots, so thank you very much.
That's great. Anything else? Thank you so much. So the next meeting will be a regular meeting on March 4th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. And then in the other two in March, March 18 will be a work session, and March 25th a regular. No further business. This meeting is adjourned.